Gail, you ready? You ready to bounce my ears? Special call, meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Dan.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Darrow.
Here.
Councilman Hatem.
Here.
Councilman Thayer.
Here.
Here. Do I hear a motion of the approval of the agenda?
Salute.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This evening, the prayer will be given by Councilman McBride. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to serve you and to serve the city. I pray now, God, that you be with each one of us. I pray for wisdom. God, your word says if we ask for wisdom or we lack wisdom in any way, we ask for it and you give it to us in abundance. And I pray right now for that. I thank you for the city, the city staff, and what they do each and every day, and I pray for their protection. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The business before us today is the review and approval of a resolution in support of a pilot program through the Anderson County Industrial Development Board for the proposal redevelopment of the former Darty Furniture Company building located 307 North Main Street. What I thought we would do is Gail's going to share some numbers with everyone as far as the impact of the pilot, good or bad, and then we'll open it up for a motion or a second. And if that continues on, then I want to ask you all, whoever would like to speak, to come up and speak at the podium. And I just want to ask you for two minutes. And also, if we get to that point, also remember, this is a very specific meeting on this one topic. So what this purpose of this is, is just approving the pilot. So any comments, questions? It has to be around the pilot and nothing else. Okay? I appreciate that. So, Gail, would you like to take the floor?
You've got the sheet in front of you. Basically, you see the current land value and improvement value on the property as it stands today, along with the city tax rate and the county taxes, for a total of $9,331. That's the 2021 rate as it is as of January this year. I gave you some estimates based on a $25,000 pilot as to what that would bring in for the city and county, and then a comparison of what the current taxes are and what that increase in those taxes are. I also gave you, in doing some of our research, it appears that for a lot of the housing projects, what these developers look at is a cost per unit, and that seems to be an across-the-board comparison. So the developer in this case gave us some similar properties, somewhat similar, maybe I should say, across Anderson County, and those are a per-unit property tax. And then the last one is, based on a $25,000 pilot payment, what it would be for the Darty building. And you can see that it's at the high end of the spectrum on those taxes. The other thing I listed for you, some of the TIFs, what I did not list, and I could have, was your current pilots that you have for industrial property, and we do have several of those still outstanding. And off the bat, I can't take, we do have one still for 3M. Eagle Ben Manufacturing has one. Isen still has one. In the past, we have had them for Duraline, as well as additional ones for Isen, and those range anywhere from, well, they're all structured very differently into how they are, and obviously, they're in amounts way larger than what this is. But I just gave you the TIFs for some comparison of what you've done recently.
Any questions for Gail? I think it might be appropriate, just to kind of, because there's a lot of misinformation out there, and we can't cover all that. But I want to try to talk a little bit about the pilot and how that works. So if I make a mistake, please, please jump in there. But pilot's a little bit different from a TIF. So you've got a set property tax today. Then let's say it's just a regular building, got a pilot. When they finish that construction, then they get appraised again. So that's a new dollar amount from that appraisal value. From that appraisal amount is where the abatement comes in. So even though we're giving an abatement, if it's 33% or 50% or whatever, however they figure it out, we are still getting more property tax than what we had before. It's not, we're not taking out, we're not taking out of our pocket. It's more of an opportunity cost, if you will, that we'll regain after the 15-year period. So did I kind of explain that somewhat?
Yes, and I mean, in reality, a pilot, as it says, is an in lieu of tax. A pilot can be structured for anything you want it to be. It can be anything from zero to, for instance, the Isen pilot, the way it was structured, there was not a large abatement to them as they got up into five, six years of the pilot. But it can be anything from a percentage to what the property assessor assesses it at, to a flat amount, to zero. It can be, it is an in lieu of tax. So there aren't particularly any guidelines. The comptroller puts guidelines on the amount of time it can span, but outside of that, the Industrial Development Board is an exempt entity, so they cannot be taxed. So that's where you, because you, as a city council or county commission, cannot abate taxes legally. That's why it has to go through the Industrial Development Board, because they are exempt.
Okay. So the process on this is, we're just giving thumbs up and thumbs down. We can't, we're not voting yes or no, we're just giving recommendations. So it'll go after this, it'll go to the county commission, where they vote up or down, correct?
It would go to the Industrial Development Board.
It's first.
Well, no, it will go to the commission.
It would go to the commission, then, but they vote up or down, right?
Only because there's not a housing pilot program existing.
Right, right. Then it'll go to the IDB.
The county commission has to give the IDB the authority to do what they're being asked to do. They don't have currently that authority.
Right. I'm just making sure that everybody kind of knows what, how this plays out. Yes, sir.
I'd like to suggest that city staff, since we're really just making a recommendation, and that's all it is, that does some investigation whether we should have our own Industrial Development Board going forward. Maybe there's some pros to that, maybe there's some cons to that, but, you know, we're kind of just making our wishes known and not, you know, I would like to suggest that.
Any other questions for Gail? So based on what we talked about before, I'll ask for a motion to, I guess, a motion of support, or I guess, a motion for Resolution Number 815. Your motion?
So moved.
Your motion? Second?
I'll second it. I think we all talk about it.
Motion and second. Now, the discussion opens up. Anyone from the crowd would like to come up? And again, I want to keep you to two minutes, and you're more than happy to talk about Yes, ma'am? Well, just please come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
I'm Kathy Taylor, and I live in Oak Ridge, Eagle Bend, Ohio. And something that strikes me, just, is you all share a lot of numbers amongst yourselves, but you didn't share them to us. Is that normal? Or where does the public get to see those numbers?
We should have made some copies for when.
Okay.
Can we put them up on the TV thing?
Probably at a moment's notice.
Yeah, we can make some copies.
Yeah, if you don't care. We'll make those copies for you.
Thank you. Also, I had a question. I've read a lot of businesses that have pilot acts. Do we have any in Anderson County residential or apartment complexes that have housing?
The only one I know right now, this is kind of a new thing that's coming about, from my understanding, is it's the apartments where, they're building 220 apartments there with the American Museum, it was, in Oak Ridge. That location, I think they're building that, and they did receive a pilot for that.
Was that through the Oak Ridge? Does Oak Ridge have their own IDB?
Yes, that's Oak Ridge IDB. Passed that. They actually passed a housing pilot program, so they have one through their IDB there.
So is this, is this property going to be a, you know, the misinformation that's out there, I think, is that everyone originally thought it was going to be condominiums, where owners had a stake in the property. I mean, honestly, that's, everybody I've talked to about it has said, "Oh, I thought that was going to be condominiums." But so now I understand it's rental property? It's going to be rental?
It's going to be apartments.
What is the advantage to the city? And what is our advantage as citizens to grant that pilot housing, pilot housing act, or whatever it's called? What do we gain from it?
Would anybody like to answer that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
So there's a cost-benefit analysis that usually is conducted. So things to consider would be, and generally speaking, pilots, TIFs are intended to attract...
I'm not sure what a TIF is.
Again, it's a tax program.
Okay.
So they tend to attract industry. And so these industries are going to get special tax treatment that they would not have received otherwise to locate to Anderson County. And so to be competitive, to get the SLs and the Isens and these large industrial developments, they get special tax treatment as an inducement for them to come. And then the economic trade-off is, they create jobs. And then, long-term, the city, the municipality, the local governments will, in theory, get more economic benefit than the taxes. So we'll make the money up and then some, because there's this economic benefit being derived, because they either create jobs, increase wages, or other economic development by measurable terms. Pilot programs usually center around economic development, and one thing that you mentioned, and I've got some, so what are some of the thoughts are, you look at the revenue gained versus potentially revenue lost. You look at the increase in public service content. So, yeah, tax revenue. And in this case, you can articulate a point that what tax revenue would be created, sales tax perhaps. You also look at what would the cost, you are allowed to look at the benefits versus the costs. What will the cost of services to the community, in this case, Clinton City, be? And if it's outweighed, and it doesn't make economic sense for the city to engage in the pilot program, then it's an economic argument. And so...
So are we saying that the benefit of this unit is going to outweigh the cost of city services to the...
That is, that is a factor.
Part of the question.
That is a factor for this body to deliberate, well, actually just make a suggestion to the body that would deliberate. But that's it. That is the question.
Let me, let me put a different perspective on it, too, because I certainly respect what Zach said, and I agree with what Zach says. But, you know, one thing, again, one of the misperceptions out here is, we can debate this all day, vote the pilot up or down. Personally, this is my opinion, is there's going to be a high potential of this development that's going to happen anyway. But we just want to support it through a pilot. So, you know, we get to save a building. I think it's very important to me. I don't want this to be another Magnet Mills, which it could very easily be. It's been neglected for many years, been looking for a good tenant for probably 40 or 50 years. But to be a partner, I look at it being a partner to do everything, everything we can as a city for this project to be successful. So again, it's just a different way of looking at it.
I guess I understand what you're saying. My concern is the difference between residential versus industrial. Industries bring in lots of jobs, they bring in all sorts of revenue. I don't know, I can't quite understand how this...
Yeah, well, I think looking into the future, too, if I didn't mean to interrupt, but there's, I would consider this a blighted property. And I think it is. It's not used for really what it's supposed to be used for.
Not the way it is right now.
I think Magnet Mills is a blighted property. I think Ingles is a blighted property. Those will be, not talking outside of the Darty building, these will be future pilot programs, because people that's going to buy into that, they're going to ask for it. So I think it's something, to your point, it's kind of new from a residential standpoint, but I think it's going to grow in popularity, because I think both sides can potentially benefit.
Much against is probably out there.
Well, you're fine. We're kind of answering questions.
I have one last question.
Yes.
Is, I, I'm wondering, we're seeing a change in downtown right now, really great. And I'm just wondering if we're jumping at the first opportunity that's presented to us, because it's right here in our hand. I mean, there's, it's a great real estate market right now. I'm just wondering if there's other opportunities out there that haven't been, or that we're, as I said, we're jumping at the first one. Is there, you know, I never like to take the first off.
Yeah.
So I'll just go ahead and state that I'm against extending a pilot for economic reasons. I do believe that perhaps that there is a greater future for that development. I know there's probably people in this room that disagree with that, and that's okay. I think that when you look at the, at the, we've discussed that it's a blighted property, and we've mentioned Magnet Mills. I cannot, I cannot stop but say, some of that is this council's fault, and some of that is failure on the city for not enforcing. How do properties get blighted? It's not overnight. It's a little by a little by a little, by lack of proper codes enforcement, perhaps. And it's very tough when you're on council, and it's very tough when you're in the staff's position, because you want to, you want to strike a balance between not being over-regulating people or overburdening people. But yet, you know, we have codes for a reason, and we should be enforcing those codes. And I think that, and that's, that's sidebar, we're going to, that's a different maybe, yeah, but just...
Well, again, I love Zach. I know he loves me, too. We're good friends, and we're going to disagree on this. I do support it, and it's just different reasons, and I respect everything he's saying. But one thing you're over, I don't mean to interrupt, but if you make my point, then I'll be quiet, is we lose, we're losing sight that we have no control over that. Somebody bought that building, and they're going to, they want to develop that, and I think the question we have to ask is, do we want to support that? Because chances are, I may be wrong, but I feel confident that it's going to be developed anyway. So the question tonight is, are we going to support it or not?
Well, you yourself stated, I think it's going to happen regardless.
I do.
So why would we give it up? Why would we give one if it's going to happen regardless?
Because I think we're going to have a seat at the table and be able to work with, and at least have a chance to work with these guys and ensure that this is going to be successful. And the extra money, you know, with this, I don't know if y'all looked at it, it might be Chinese to some of you guys, is, you know, our obligation over 15 years, as best as we can, as we've been, Gail, it's probably going to be about $100,000 over the 15 years. So it's not, in the scope of the project, it's not a lot of money. But it could refinish some hardwood floors, it could upgrade fixtures, it could do some things to make that, the building itself, much more attractive. And I think that's the goal, is to make it successful. If we can give our support and just a little bit of money behind it, then I think it's well worth it.
Or it could go straight into the pocket of the developer.
It could.
Did I say that?
I said, or it could go straight into the pocket of the developer.
It could.
And do you, and are you guarantee a seat at the table?
We had talked, we've had several meetings, and I brought up an advisory board, and they were receptive to that.
I think it's a good faith thing.
Yeah, yeah. They can do anything. I think, you know, my fear is, well, I won't say...
In today's world, you don't do a lot of good things.
But sometimes, sometimes you have to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't let Ted Janks just speak on the...
Sit right here.
James, you can sit there, that's fine.
Sit right here. All right. That's good.
Do you want to, just a second, James, we need a microphone or something?
I think they can hear me.
Well, it's for our viewers, too. It's on TV tonight, too, so.
I speak as good as him, Roger. Couple of observations, and I apologize for my speech. It's a little slow. Comparing this project to Magna and others that we have given abatement to is, number one, ridiculous. They're not anywhere near close. That's coming from chairman of the Industrial Development Board in Milton Hill when I was here. You're talking about massive creation of jobs all the way down. You're talking about retail all the way up. You can't compare these two. They get, it's impossible. And like you said, this is new, a new kind of deal that we're looking at on apartments. The only other question I have, Mayor, we've long known that you've been in support. You haven't always said that. You're talking a lot right now. You're confident this is going to happen. Would you enlighten us to the people and the meetings that you have had, that we have not shared those, but you have? Would you please let us know who you've met with and what the conversations were?
Well, you know, as my role as mayor, I do have more meetings than most councilmen. This is just, that's just the role, it's responsibility.
That's why you're the mayor.
Well, that's why I get the extra $50 a month.
Right.
And Roger and I have met with individuals, we've been on calls with individuals, so we've had those conversations. I think Roger will support this, too. It's just that every, more than once or twice or three times, he has expressed that we're going to, we're going to do this project. And that's the, and again, I'm just acting on good faith that he's a man of his word and he's going to do it.
Then why are we here? Why are we looking to help them at all?
Well, as I said...
If you're already confident that this is going to happen.
Well, again, it goes back to what I was talking to with Amanda. It's just, I'd rather partner with somebody than fight against somebody and ensure that they're successful. And I think we can have a seat at the table, and if something isn't what it's supposed to do, then we call them out. If we don't, we turn our backs. They're going to say, you can kiss, you know, whatever, because we don't care what you think. And a little bit of money that we're giving them, I think it's a small price. And again, that's just my, that's just my thoughts.
Yeah, well, I'd like to hear everybody else.
Well, I'll go next. I've been all over the board. Wake up one day, one way, about lunchtime, a different way, go to bed a different way. But the thing that I have a hard time, and this is the small business part of me that I struggle with, and that is, when I relocated Clinton Drugstore to its current location, I didn't get any help. I didn't get any TIF money, and I struggle with that. Now, okay, now, timeout. This is a huge project, but at the same time, that was a huge project to me. In 1991, when I stepped out and bought Clinton Drugstore, then in 2000, when I changed and located a different building, that was a huge indebtedness for me and my family. And so the concept is what I struggle with you. And again, I know you have to do it for industry, I understand that, and so you, well, you've got to do it here also, but my biggest struggle is the fact that we're, I didn't get any. And I don't know of any other local businesses that's done that either. And that's part of the risk, and you take your money, and, you know, you, I've worked hard for 30 years, and God has blessed me tremendously, but at the same time, I took a risk, and the city didn't, didn't help pave my parking lot or strip it or anything, and I didn't ask for it, probably didn't qualify for it, and wouldn't qualify today either. So that's my personal struggle.
Jim, can, go ahead.
I guess, like, Jim, I went back and forth, and I'd like to see the building redone and be nice, but I do struggle with the residential, the housing pilot, because you don't know the return on investment versus the industrial, where you got a better understanding of what you're getting back. So I do struggle with the pilot for housing.
When I think of the shape that the city's in, because the gentleman to my right and to my left, financially, is significant. We're doing great. If you didn't know, the city of Clinton is doing fantastic, not just financially, but economically. And there's a lot of development that's happening in South Clinton. There's a lot of leadership, both on this council and in this community and in this audience. And so I don't feel that, that the city has to be desperate for, this is the last train that's leaving the station. Or what? You know, or what? We're going to pay off our debt in two years, and our city schools are going to win more awards, and we've got a Main Street program now. I mean, so what's the, well, it stays where it is, and we lose the opportunity to rehabilitate the building. Maybe not necessarily so. There are other parties, I think, that are interested in that building, and I'd say the city could be one of them. I mean, I just saw in the paper, the tax says it was worth $167,000. Well, I'd be for the city buying the building at a reasonable price and then dictating the future of what happens to that property. Would much rather see that happen. Now, my two minutes is not up. You know, I think that when you look at the local demands on city services, it's not going to merit the issuance of abatement. When you look at the demands on city services, they far outweigh any economic benefit right now, which is pure conjecture to me. Other concerns that I have is, there's no proof, and it's been stated here, that they're planning to do the project with or without the pilot program. There's no proof of financial need, nor evidence given of any financial commitments for the total project cost with no contingencies. There's no proof of any financial need supported by any evidence that we have. And granted, this isn't the body that they have to present that to. But the project just doesn't promote jobs, it doesn't promote economic activity of the kind that merits a pilot program. I think it can finally, it creates a dangerous precedent for future developers. You did the develop, you gave them a pilot, where's my pilot? And I have a suspicion that whatever individual gets control of Magnet Mills one day is going to come before this body and say, where's my pilot? And it may not be $100,000, it may be millions. And we've set this precedent, and now how can we say we don't want to do that? Therefore, I can't support and won't support, and I don't, you know, if this group of developers, if they feel like they're not going to be partners with the city because we didn't give them everything they want, well, I'm just the councilman to fight that fight. And that's all I have to say.
Craig Young, do you have something?
Yeah.
Name and address, please.
Craig Young, so... Have we, have we here from everybody?
I don't know if everybody wanted to say anything, James, but they can if they like it. Yeah, we'll talk, but let Craig go ahead.
Yeah, we'll talk, but let Craig go ahead.
So, just real quickly, I think these pilot programs are really important for historic downtown districts. There is a lot of different reasons why they're important. First, there's usually greater financial investments that's required to make these projects happen, because they have to meet historical zoning requirements. Almost every other city that I've been to, that I've worked in, gives these pilots, and it's watched. I mean, it's watched by investors that come in and do that. You're asking them to do a little bit more than they would normally do, and you see that happening with this particular project. So usually, there is a request for a pilot. I disagree with the discussion on the economics. This is a great increaser of density in downtown Clinton. It revital, it will revitalize downtown Clinton, absolutely. It brings people in, it will support the local businesses that are downtown, it will bring in that increased density, it'll support restaurants, all of those will add additional, and it'll bring in additional investors. As you know, I bought another building, partially because I like where this project is going on my own building, right? And I plan to continue to make those investments, but I also watch very closely what the council does in going off to support it. Now, I know you didn't, Jim, you didn't get that payment of taxes with the pilot program, but I think that's something that the city needs to honestly look at. What do we do to attract investors into this city? What do we do to the investors and the business owners that are already there, to make it easier for them to proceed forward, and make the investments that are necessary for our downtown to really be vibrant? Now, I agree with you, Zach, and I know we've got a little bit more time left, Scott, I agree with you, Zach, that there's a lot of things out there, right? But there's also what we want to have done with our downtown. I really like Clinton, and I've liked it ever since I've been here, and I've invested a significant amount of this town, I stabilize old buildings, right? I don't do the big investments, but I stabilize them, and then I move them on, hopefully so somebody else can take them. I really like that, and I believe in the potential of this downtown. But the last thing I'll state is this, Buzz Goss, who's the architect of this, is a huge developer and an art tech, he's the best that you're going to get. You're not going to find people who do better than that. So when he comes in here, and he's making these decisions and these developments, there's a lot of people who are going to pay attention and listen to how the city is working with developers. So I think you're also sending a message, kind of broader message, when you make these decisions, when you go through, and I think that's critically important for the future of our downtown. And I ask you that you carefully consider it as you, as you move, as you move forward, because I think there's a great potential here, and I think there's a lot that can be done to make ourselves more vibrant than even where we are right now.
Thank you, Craig. Anyone else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Name an address, please.
Claygood, 201 West Meyer Avenue. And this is a letter that Barbie and I composed, mostly Barbie, and emailed to you guys, so I hope y'all got it. So I'm just going to go ahead and read it. Dear Mayor, Councilman, thank you for the opportunity to have a voice in your pending resolution to the Anderson County Commission. In addition to my personal residence, I have multiple properties throughout our city, including commercial property, in our downtown Market Main area. I've always paid property tax, and the city has always used that money to support the many services all our citizens enjoy. As a taxpayer, business owner, property owner, and resident, I am adamantly opposed to any type of resolution that would support a tax abatement pilot program for the Darty Building and the investment company associated with it. I understand the city council can only recommend to the Anderson County Commission, but your opposition to any tax abatement through a resolution would be weighted heavily, and would convey the interest and wishes of the citizens of Clinton. I am asking you, city council, to draft a resolution to the county commission that would oppose granting tax abatements for this project. Surely, the citizens would not be in favor of subsidizing a program that will burden the taxpayers of our beautiful city with the added expense of police protection, fire protection, city schools, garbage pickup, and other amenities that Clinton has to offer, all the while adding to the profit margin of an investment company that doesn't even call Clinton home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, anyone on council like to have any comments?
I'll go ahead next, and like another of the other councilmen, I've kind of wavered back and forth, and like them, the idea of residential versus industrial has weighed heavily in my thoughts. Something that has been brought to my attention, and has really made me stop and think, is, yes, we've got residential versus industrial and everything, but even beyond the taxes and beyond that, this development is going to create a greater load on our city services. Police, fire, garbage pickup, for those of you who don't know, we've already had an issue over parking for this facility. The parking for this facility will have to be the public parking. There, and if you think about the number of police calls, the garbage pickup, the ambulance services, I was made, I was reminded that probably in the City of Clinton, we have more police-fire calls to the towers, and to assisted living, and places like that. That's not included in the taxes, you know, you don't, you don't take that in consideration, they pay taxes, but what's the, what's the return as far as our ambulance service, as far as our fire, as far as our police? That's, that's kind of a cost that, you know, is a hidden cost. What about parking? That's a hidden cost also. And that, that's made me think very seriously about, you know, what are we putting into this basket in return for what we're getting out of it?
Larry, just a clarification on that, again, I'm just pointing it out, this, that has nothing, that would have nothing to do with pilot. If it happened, I mean, it's just more the development, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Roger, if we had an IDB, let's take this back.
If they want to open it up regardless, this is about just approving the pilot or not.
But we may, it may be a different development when we do that, too.
It speaks to economic viability.
Yes.
Respectfully disagree.
If we had an IDB currently, how would that change tonight, or moving forward, as far as our control?
I think it's, if we had our own IDB, that it would have came, if we didn't have our own matrix, that it would have came before council, then it went before our IDB.
It wouldn't go, it wouldn't, it wouldn't go to commission, would it?
It wouldn't go to commission.
It would, or...
Would not.
Would not, yeah.
It would not go to commission.
Yeah, it'd just go to us, then, yeah.
Would it still go to commission?
Not if you have your own IDB.
And that would be my recommendation, that what Councilman Harold said, that we can go look at one of two things for future, because I'm with everybody here, I think we'll see future development coming in, wanting some housing, that we either ask the Anderson County IDB to do as we do with industrial, to come up with some kind of housing matrix, as we do with industrial boards, we don't have these discussions, they have something that follow in, if they, that they're making an investment, kind of like the Oak Ridge one, that they've got their own matrix now, or we do our own IDB and come up with our own matrix, but to have something that kind of talks about what the developer put into the, into the property, how many units are put in, there's several categories that Oak Ridge used. They have come up with that. But Oak Ridge has that, but they still have control of their IDB. See, now, and I need this for my own, and I know this has nothing to do with this, I just want to ask a question. How many people comprise the IDB board in the county right now? Seven. Who picks those people?
They're appointed by the mayor.
County mayor?
County mayor.
So of those seven, how many are city representatives, might we say?
Yeah, handful.
Huh? I mean...
A handful, there's, there's...
Yeah, there's, it's a mixture of...
But our, but our mayor has no, we don't, it's not like there's seven seats, and there's two for this, and two for that, and two for this, it's county mayor, and, okay.
No, but, but the Oak Ridge IDB would be Oak Ridge citizens.
Oak Ridge citizens, Oak Ridge council is involved, or I guess Oak Ridge mayor would be doing that.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So while we're depending upon the county's IDB board, we don't have a whole lot of input on who those members are, per se.
You don't have any input on who the members are.
Right.
But you'd say from past experience...
They respect our...
They have always respected what has been sent forward from council.
And we have no reason to believe they won't.
Right, I've attended most of them lately, in regards to the pilots and the TIFs that's been put in place. As a matter of fact, recently, we had an industry that they turned down a pilot for, based on comments that we brought forward in regards to the fact that there's a current appeal in place for an existing pilot, and they respectfully denied that until some things were resolved. So my experience has been, they've always respected...
It's always been a good relationship.
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yes, Jinx, I've tried to look at this with a common sense look at the Darty Building, been around a long time, brought up here in Clinton. That building's as iconic as probably the Green Bridge. Everybody knows where Darty's is, and you know where the Green Bridge is. There's two ways I'm looking at this, I don't want, I don't want that building to stay vacant, the roof caves in, and two floors fall, and we've got another Magnet Mills, who's going to fix this? And nobody steps up, and here we are. And a lot of people says, we've got a developer going to, going to build it up, and it's really going to look nice, so we're going, if we, if we don't vote for this, and it doesn't go through, we've missed an opportunity. I'm not sure I've ever thought this way, I think the word is out now, that this is probably a viable building, something could be done with it. Since I found out about this, Mr. Bostick, it had already been to the chamber, and it had already been to two or three other organizations before the city council really knew that these conversations were going on. So I've always felt like we were behind the eight ball from the beginning. My constituents would ask me about the Darty Building, at one time, I had no idea what they were talking about. That's, I asked them for information, you know, because I didn't know. I asked Mr. Howken, he wasn't really up on it at the time. Now, this is three or four months ago, five, six months ago, I guess that the conversations really started. My constituents are not for this period. Had last week, probably 25 phone calls, texts, emails, everything. So at this point in time, until we get something that works for us, with Market and Main Street in my mind, getting ready to just kind of really blossom, I'm not sure this is the right fit at this particular time. I won't be voting for this.
I'll be the last one to speak, Jinx, I love you. I have a, I have a, I have a ton of concern here, but also have a ton of hope in this city. And, and, and I'll keep it, I'll keep it simple, I'm prepared to extend it all the branch, and I'll do it again when someone else gets in a situation where they want to improve our city. I, I get it, it's a historic area, it's a, it's a zone that is close to everyone's heart, but I'm going to be supporting the growth and the progress of this city, and that's just how I see it.
So you're for...
I'm for it.
Anybody else?
Craig, to answer a question that you raised, and I didn't want to interrupt you, how do, how do, how do we as a city promote economic growth and progress? I can tell you how. We offer the, some of the lowest taxes in comparison to any other city our size in the state. If you go over the side, other side of Elza Gate, you check their tax rates, their property taxes, our property taxes are tremendous. Number two, we offer some of the greatest services to our city, with our fire, and our police department, our public works, and the work that they all three do, we live in one of the most safest and happiest little towns that I know in this state. Also, we provide great city schools that are unmatched, unparalleled to any other region. They win award after award after award. So when you combine safety, services, low taxes, great schools, and great people like yourself that has decided to come in, and I applaud you, because I know the work that you've done down there, and I, and it's, and just like the mayor's previously said, this is not personal. We're all in this together, we're all Clintonians, and we can gather together in a, in a process and discuss what we think is best for the city, and it doesn't make you a bad person or me a bad person. So I, that's just one, I wanted to state that, thank you.
I'll make one last comment, because I've talked enough tonight. And Jinx, I love you, too. Everybody's piling on Jinx, I love you, too, man. You know, just, just as a thought, that one thing that really concerns me, and we'll have to look, and I hope I'm wrong, down in the future, you know, Zach made a comment about future pilots, and we really need to really talk about this when we can from a council standpoint, because my fear is, word's going to get out that Clinton's not pilot-friendly, and these areas that do need the pilots, a Magnet Mills property's going to need a pilot. You know, Ingles has been an eyesore for how many years? 30-plus years? It's going to need, it's going to need some encouragement. And that's something we'll have to talk about as council at a future date, but I, I mean, that's one thing that I, that I worry about. But anyway, with that being said, no more comments, any more discussion?
Call and question.
Roll call, please. And yes would be in support of, no would be not supportive, of course.
Councilman Gann?
No.
Councilman McBride?
No.
Councilman Harold?
No.
Councilwoman Stamey?
No.
Councilman Hatmaker?
Yes.
Councilman Fair?
No.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Motion fails on account of five to two. Meeting adjourned.